And this meeting is going to be streamed live through the Carroll County Media Center and the town's Facebook page. We all can stand for the pledge of allegiance at a moment of silence.
The pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A moment of silence, please. So, um, there's a bunch of you here, so I'm going to ask if there's any public minutes, you would like to come up to the podium?
I'm sorry.
Just one man signed up.
But is it general or is it for the security?
It doesn't matter. Okay, come on up. State your name and your address, please.
I'm Michelle Flynn, I live at 7309 Brown Street in Sykesville. So, I'm here because of the gas station proposal. I just, it's a big topic of conversation on our street. I would urge all of you to go to the end of Brown Street, turn around, try to make the right onto Central and see what it's like. So, I don't really have any opposition to this business going in. I knew, I've been there a long time, my new father who was there, wonderful man. We actually had conversations about this particular issue with him and parking cars on Central whenever he was the business owner there. And he agreed not to do it and he didn't do it because we already had the issue with people cutting that corner. And we had to deal with, we made no parking in front of, I don't know what the address is, 763 Central. And because people were parking there, my husband actually got into an accident where he was trying to avoid the car and then somebody swung right around the corner. And it was his fault because he wasn't. And so, we're running into something similar now as we see people in there doing whatever it is they're doing. And there's lots of cars parked on Central or it's parked on the corner. So, I just want to urge the council to consider parking and where they're going to park and how dangerous it is for us to get to make that turn. And again, there's a car that parks right on the corner of Brown Street, so there's like a little driveway. And I'm sure Lisa knows it. And so, when we try to turn and Brown Street's like this narrow anyway, you can't fit two cars in there and, you know, Carroll County, lots of people have trucks. And making that turn is already treacherous. And when you have people making these wide swings around that gas station and you're coming out, it's treacherous in there. So, I've almost gotten into an accident there, just being in my lane and people swinging wide as we come around. It's the same thing when you're coming from Springfield to try to make the turn onto Brown Street. And they're parked on that corner and you're trying to make more than a ninety-degree turn because of where they're parked. So, that's just, you know, my input. Again, not against this company, not one single bit. Happy to have somebody in there. We're done with graffiti being on the walls and things like that that we were dealing with. I just urge the council to really try to solve the parking problem. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can we ask questions?
Oh, yeah.
Is that okay, like we did last time? Or no?
Are you asking me?
We should wait until we get to that actual agenda item?
Alright.
Wait, send me that.
And I'll make a comment about that.
Yep.
And, is there?
That's all that's sent.
Okay. Was there any other?
We did receive one email comment that should be on everybody's table.
Okay. Should I read this into the minutes?
Uh, you don't have to read it. It'll be part of the record.
Okay. Alright.
Should we wait until?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. I wasn't sure if there was going to be another opportunity.
You will.
If there's no other public comments, we will continue. Next is the consent agenda. Everybody have a chance to read the minutes.
Motion to approve the consent agenda. Second.
So, Councilman Grassley. Thank you for the last one. Because I didn't know you, I just met you.
Forgot my name already.
It's a team effort.
Come on.
Moving up, people blue or going?
That's right, that's right. All in favor? Aye. Aye. All opposed? All abstaining? Consent agenda approved. Second item on the agenda is unfinished business, which is the discussion for the ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash oh one. An ordinance of the mayor and council of the town of Sykesville amending the code of the town of Sykesville, chapter one eighty, zoning article ten, BL, local zoning district subsection one eighty dash sixty-two, conditional uses. So, you, Councilman?
I did have one question in reference to the issues with parking and sort of line of sites. How are you aware of anything that we've tried to do, like putting in mirrors or anything that could possibly help in one way, shape, or form around that area? The reason I ask is because we've done it in other places in town where there are concerns similar to what you've mentioned there. I can think of at least two that are coming to mind right now, so I was just wondering.
Can you explain like where you do that?
So you?
Because the corner, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I should let you finish.
Oh, no, go ahead.
So, the corner where the property of the gas station comes in Central is, it's this weird.
Yep.
Okay. So, like, I don't, so putting a mirror like over where Jamie, the Tignors, live, like on that other corner?
I don't know if it's ever been explored.
No, I think it would be coming out of Brown, straight on to that you could see a mirror and see a broader vision of who's coming on Central is what he'd be talking about. I actually wonder though, there is a non, a no parking section on the street. I don't know how that-
He made that up.
Okay, so what I would say-
A lot years ago.
Okay, so that's from the middle of your property, right over to the corner of Brown, right to where, of Central to where it hits Brown.
It's in front of the, I think it used-
It's in-
It goes in front of the house that Brenda, where Brenda lives. It goes, yeah, and then that tree down there used to be the big pine, I don't know.
But I'm just thinking, but it, doesn't it start Jamie or your?
It does.
It starts in front of your house. So, my suggestion would actually be that we look at no parking from Brown to the stop sign on Springfield on both sides of the street.
Good idea.
Because that allows for the turn. I haven't seen the same problem coming out of Carl. And then there's a stop sign at first, which is the next intersection. But that might help then with a lot of the coming and going and the turning, because if those sidewalks come in, the turn might be even wider coming off of Central or off of Springfield onto Central. So, I would say maybe if we can look at, I don't know what the process was to get the section that is there, but maybe-
Yeah, if I could, I'll just say this. Tonight, we're only looking at whether or not the use would be added as conditional use. All of this is actually great conversation for either the BZA hearing or the site plan hearing, the planning commission. Because again, those are good valid points that we need to take into consideration, so.
I just wasn't sure if it'd been explored or not, or how much it'd been explored.
I mean, I think we talked about that at the time. About it that happened, because kind of had the accident and we complained about it and-
Yeah, so I think we can look at, when we start to go through the process and working with the business owner, you know?
Right.
I think we can definitely come to solutions that would make that whole intersection.
If this ordinance is passed, then that's the next step. And once that's the next step, then it would be advertised, so all input can come in with that. So, that's part of the planning. We just have to get to that step by approving or denying this. So, any other comments? Questions?
I have a comment. Oh, please.
Is the business okay with that? Like, is that part of the site plan thing? That we-
That, we haven't gotten that far yet.
Okay.
So, my comment is simple. I know there's a lot of people who don't favor this, but I, there are people who don't favor it. I won't say a lot. There are a lot, there is a lot of concern, that much is true. But, we empowered a group of people called the planning commission. And one thing about management is you empower people to do their job, you back them unless you have a good reason not to. So, I don't like the way this is turning out, but, but, these people have recommended we go ahead and I will go on the record of saying I will support their recommendation, even though I know there are people unhappy and even though there's a lot to be done. So, I would admonish anyone in the building to make sure you're scrupulous in terms of things like never letting oil hit the ground and making sure cars aren't where they shouldn't be and all those things that you can do to make sure that our community gets along more harmoniously. So, what I'm looking for is compromise. Nobody's going to get all they want. Hopefully, no one walks away empty-handed. As I learned in a management class on negotiation, hopefully, everybody's a little bit dissatisfied but not angry. So, please be careful, assuming it passes, and if it doesn't pass, I understand. But I can't, in good conscience, vote against what our planning commission has thoroughly researched and said, this makes sense to us, they're experts. So, I'm laying my position out on the table.
I'd like to make a comment.
We have not closed the public comment yet.
Well, we haven't, but we asked if there was going to be additional comments. Now, it's more and more discussion. We'd like to give the applicant an opportunity to speak before we do anything else. And I guess after that, if we wanted to take additional comment, we can do it. Thanks, Joe. Keeping us on track. Appreciate you.
Thank you. Good evening. Kelly Miller, seventy-three East Main Street, Westminster, Maryland, two-one-one-five-seven. As you know, I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicants. I do have Danny and Tom both back with us tonight, Joy, who are the property owners. You may have had the time to review the letter that I submitted via email. I wanted to do that just to put everything, kind of summarize what we've already talked about in writing and not rehash it all tonight for you. Tonight, I will just, unless there are any specific questions that you have about the information of that letter, I will just briefly say that, you know, during the January eighth hearing, you heard a lot of really emotional testimony from the property owner, the operator, and some of the surrounding neighbors. I thought that was all excellent testimony, but again, focused back on the real question before you, which is a text amendment to your BL zone. This property is already zoned BL, so it is, there are a slew of retail and service uses available to it. This would be adding another use to that zone and I will continue to advocate for allowance of that as a permitted use because of all of the reasons you heard as part of the January eighth testimony, the reasons set forth in the letter, and the path that these property owners and operator have been on to try to get this through and approved, knowing that the next step, no matter what happens, the next step, if this is an allowed use in the BL, whether it's permitted or conditional, they need to go through the planning commission process, as the councilman just pointed out. And that process will address a lot of the concerns that we've heard raised. So, unless there are any specific questions of me, that's, or anything of the information in the letter for you. I also did bring extra copies if anyone needs an extra copy.
We all have those.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. No questions?
Nope.
Thank you.
Any more comments, Joe?
It's up to the council whether or not you want to continue the public hearing even longer.
I'm not opposed to it.
I'm not. I guess I would ask, how many more public comments do we have, just so we, how many more people will speak publicly? Just one? I'm fine with that. Are you guys?
I'm good.
Okay.
Good idea.
Thanks for your letter.
Of course.
Jane Murgler, seven-six-three Central Avenue. I'd like to speak against the proposed amendment to, to the particular law that we're addressing tonight. I think that the type of business that is being proposed and has been occurring on and off for the last few months really represents something that's not congruent with the neighborhood, which is residential, the middle school next door, and a beautiful park that we've invested in down the way. I think what we're talking about is something that would lower property values. We're talking about light industry with almost a dozen cars parked on that small, small postage stamp of an area. And I think there's, there are safety issues that the neighbors share, or shared a few minutes ago, with line of sight. So, please consider that this is not necessarily something that would be positive for the neighborhood. Safety, property values, and something that enhances the neighborhood. It's just not there. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Any other comments?
Motion to close the public hearing? Second.
Oliver Gaver.
Aye.
Aye.
Public comments closed. So, now, if there's any comments between us, do you have anybody?
Well, sure. What do you have some comments? So, I've put together something, I think this has been said over the last two meetings. This property's been in our town for over a hundred years. For the majority of this time, it was, been run as a service station. The owners of the Joy property have been patient and responsive while the town and planning commission worked through the process of determining whether zoning map or text amendment is most appropriate. And they spent some time discerning who they wanted to run in that property. They found a compatible owner and a good neighbor from the stories we heard last week that would be in this building. The planning commission had two meetings? Two or three meetings on this and went through this issue thoroughly and they voted unanimously to recommend the text amendment to the local business district zoning to add service garage to the ordinance. And the town recommends that we approve the text amendment. While there are still some concerns that everyone here shares, I believe that this can all be addressed in the normal procedure of the site plan, as Joe was mentioning before. So, I personally would like to see this move quickly so the service garage can continue and the process start and the business keep getting up and running as soon as possible. This is not in haste, but in appropriate duration to satisfy all requirements while not holding up the process much longer. That's all I really have to say about it.
Thank you.
So, yeah, I would say it has been a business in our town. Yeah, when I purchased my home, it was, it was a gas station and operating. I think that the concerns that neighbors have addressed, I've heard from the business owners that they understand that, that they've heard that, are willing to work with the planning commission and with the neighbors. So, I think that it's really important during that planning process that our, that the neighbors are involved in that, raising the concerns about both the tires and the fluids and the cement versus gravel and the design of it and the turning and the site of, you know, all of that. But I think we have a process for that, to do that. In terms of the recommendation or request to move three versus less than, or more than three to conditional or recommended or whatever, I don't see a material difference besides addressing one, you know, particular business. And I think we can't make a zoning plan based off of the needs of one particular business. I think we need to do it based off of the needs of the town. So, I would be in support of as recommended, but not the adjustments that's being requested in terms of the three garages versus, I haven't heard anything of what makes that different. I think the regs are all the same, the needs are all the same, whether it's three or four or two or ten. So, that's where, those are my thoughts in terms of where I am.
Thank you.
So, I agree with a lot of what's been said by Councilman Grassley and Councilwoman Guroff. And maybe what I would add to that is that there's two other businesses in town that also are subject to this as of right now, that could become a conforming use if, when, you know, anything were to change in any of those businesses. I think that's important as well. You know, one of the kind of compelling facts for me is that the business has been in place since nineteen-seventeen. That means something to me in reference to sort of the community aspect of that it's, you know, it, when I heard that, I don't know, that was sort of a tipping point for me as we move forward. I happen to be the liaison to the planning commission. There's an elaborate site process. I think we need to be careful as we navigate through that process. I've heard sidewalks as an issue, sightlines as an issue, parking as an issue. Councilwoman Guroff mentioned a few other items. I think in the different meetings that we've had, I think it's five meetings now, including council meetings and planning commission meetings so far on this, at least recently, we have a lot of notes around different concerns that have been raised. We can make sure that all of those things are raised as part of the next part of the process. In terms of making a conditional use or a permitted use, so I understand the exigency of the permitted use and not needing to go, not wanting to go through another BZA sort of process. But I also have some concerns about making service stations a permitted use in town with the idea that maybe there could be many of those that could pop up. I don't think that that'll happen. I just don't think that that, I don't think the business is there for that, but, but I also don't think that that's in alignment with what we're hoping that the town is, right? We want there to be a healthy mix of different businesses throughout. You know, I was at the planning commission meeting where the planning commission made the vote to move forward with it as a conditional use and that's sort of where I am as well. So, you know, I'm in favor of moving forward with the proposal, but not with it as a permitted use. Thanks.
You heard what I said, I just want to reaffirm, I agree with everyone. I don't want to reopen this discussion based on the document we got today. I'd rather go ahead with what the planning commission is, you know? We're on the course, let's complete it. I'm good.
I just want to end the conversation by saying that I would like to move forward with this. This is the beginning step. There's a planning process. There's, this is just the beginning. And with the comment about making this a conditional versus a permitted use, I, if we make this a permitted use in the future, just like Councilman Schofield said, there could be a pop-up shop and it's automatically able to become a garage. So, I think that we need to maintain what we have now and approve or deny the verbiage as presented. So-
I think too, on the permitted use, just to get back to this request, we're currently in a rezoning rewrite that we started and the process might take a while, so hopefully this will get taken fair as a permitted use in that, in that point of time. I kind of like the idea of just three-bay, a local three-bay shop, but what does that mean exactly? Like, you know, who knows what it could be, so. Can I make a motion? You make the motion, you have it up in front of you. Alright, I got it up. So, I'll make a motion to approve the introduction, the ordinance of twenty oh twenty-four dash oh one.
Adoption.
Adoption, I'm sorry. I'm looking at-
I should have made the motion.
You should have. I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance twenty twenty-four, the adoption of twenty twenty-four dash oh one. Second.
So, Councilman Grassley first, Councilman Schofield second. Any other comments? Everybody who, agree? Approved, agree? Raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody? That was everybody, correct? You're not asking. You're not asking.
It's for you to say.
So, new business is the introduction of-
Do we want to give a minute, pause just a, or a minute that, yeah?
Thank you for all coming. Thank you. Thanks for all coming.
Thank you.
Thank you all. We never left.
And Algo too.
I mean, yeah, well, I mean, you spent a lot of time on it.
I'm a little out of sorts.
I know, but you spent a lot of time on that, man. That's not including the reading off the, I mean, I just seen the meeting times you spent.
Kind of pain pills are you on, by the way?
None.
Tough guy.
We're going to move forward to new business. Introduction of ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash oh two, the FY twenty twenty-four budget revision. Joe, would you like to give us a synopsis of this?
I can, so, thank you, Madam President, really. So, again, as most of you are aware, when we get through about half the fiscal year, we like to go through and make sure that our numbers are tracking the way we either expected them to, and if they're not, we like to adjust them to, just to kind of get us back to where we see revenues, expenses coming in. So, before you is budget revision number one for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. It's an amendment, it's actually increase of revenue and expenses of a hundred ninety-seven thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars. I will not go through each individual line item, but I will hit some highlights so everybody kind of knows where at least the big ticket items are. On the revenue side, looking at intergovernmental, we did increase our state income tax collection estimates. So, as most of you know, or most of you remember, when we go through, I like to budget income tax revenue on a five-year rolling average. So, when we set the budget, it was one level. When we finished FY twenty-three, our last fiscal year, that raised what that average was going to be. So, again, we're just basically adjusting it to what that level is. Service fees, that line item or that category had to go down a little bit because this was where we were showing the revenues for rents that we were getting from Sykesville Station, obviously, since that lease has been expunged and the new tenant has not actually taken occupancy just yet, we're not collecting any revenue there. And then miscellaneous sources, we did, we've adjusted both the interest categories because thanks to our treasurer, we've been getting an excellent rate of return on some of our investments in cash that we have, so interest is tracking better than what we anticipated. But we've also dipped into our unencumbered fund to track where, where we were taking money to redo our zoning rewrite, which was mentioned a little earlier. So, again, we had seventy-five thousand dollars in the expense side. We're actually offsetting that with revenue just from an unencumbered fund, just because that's a little different than a capital, a capital reserve account. On the expense side of things, we did have to increase professional services, mainly the legal services line item. Most of our other categories in, say, administrative, public safety, public works, even the gatehouse, you'll see adjustments in like the telephone category or some of our services. That was an upgrade to our phone system. We've also adjusted in the administrative category to account for the server upgrade that we just approved a few meetings ago. So, again, we're starting to see some of those expenses hit some of those categories. Outside of that, some of the bigger items, we did have to look at streets and roads to the contracted services line item. That is for the increase in expenses to take over the Raincliff trash collection. So, again, that was a tax rebate that we were sending to Raincliff that we're now taking that under our own contract. And then with the, actually, the Raincliff trash rebate line item has been zeroed out, but then we added in the Parkside trash rebate. So, again, we're just making those minor corrections. Those are the basic highlights. If anybody has any specific questions about any of the other particular line items, certainly we're here to answer them. Otherwise, we are requesting that council approve the introduction tonight and set the public hearing for February twelfth.
Any questions?
I'm just, one question, why employee benefits went down? I mean, that's great, but is it because we're one officer short?
That's not, unfortunately, that's not why it went down. But it's-
It's one point three percent, so like-
We just came in, so the workman's comp line item was just a little cheaper this year.
Oh, good, 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 okay. And historic buildings went up by forty-one percent, which wasn't a lot, a big percentage, but not a big number, not a big number. Is there a problem? Something blow up?
You want to wait until I talk about it?
Yes. As long as you're, as long as you address it.
Well, no, so the historic buildings, actually, that's just the, that went up because of, again, talking about the new lease for Sykesville Station. We took over paying the property tax on that.
Oh, okay. It wasn't exorbitant, I'm not upset in the slightest, I'm just curious. You can ask, you can ask him, I always have questions, even when they're, even when I'm happy with- You can ask, you can ask him, I always have questions, even when they're, even when I'm happy with a question, like, oh, something went down, why?
So again, just to make it clear, the historic building category doesn't include the gatehouse. That's, that's completely separate.
Oh.
So gatehouse has its own category.
Then you don't have to address it.
Historic buildings are more the schoolhouse structure and, like I said, Sykesville Station.
I, I had one question about the legal services for legal counsel. The eighty thousand, eight eighty-seven through December, that's how much is actually been charged, correct?
Currently spent.
Alright, and the expectation of two hundred thousand is our best estimate of what we think we'll spend throughout the rest of the FY?
Correct.
Okay. Including everything that's happening in May and all of that?
That's right.
And it, and the possibility of seeing these funds again if we were to win? It's, I mean, it's possible, right, that it could come back?
There's, there's a possibility of that.
Right.
I'm not going to put a percent.
I'm not, I'm not going to put up any type of speculation on that either, I'm just wondering. Alright, thank you very much. I'm good.
Other questions, comments?
With regard to the station, can we get an update next meeting on where things stand?
Where we stand? Sure. I mean, briefly, it's, we're still working on an application for MHD, but we can get into more detail next time.
Thanks.
Can I ask a question concerning that, that's related to the budget?
Sure.
Do you know that we're a government entity, we still need to pay property taxes?
Because it's a commercial building that's being used for commercial purposes, we still have to pay the tax on it. If it were a government building that were being used for government services or providing some sort of government service, we would be eligible or we would be exempt from that tax.
Like the post office and the gatehouse?
Correct.
And our building. Okay, thank you for that clarification.
No problem.
Any other questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the introduction of ordinance twenty oh twenty-four dash oh two and set the public hearing and adoption for February twelfth.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Any objections? Who do you, you're not a Smith, I can't say that word. It's approved.
I would like to say, thank you so much for the spreadsheet on the budget amendments. I think I say that every year, but Craig, the spreadsheet that you give us and Joe's overview is, is very helpful. It's just, it's a breath of fresh air every time I get a budget amendment.
Alright, nothing in addition to new business, I'm going to move on to announcements and reports. The next meeting is Monday, February twelfth, seven o'clock here at the townhouse, also streamed through Carol Community and our Facebook Live. We also have volunteer opportunities available with the Historic District Commission, Parks and Rec Commission, Board of Zoning Appeals, and the Police Auxiliary. If anybody is interested, please email town@sykesville.net for more information.
And crossing guard, two still? Maybe one crossing guard? And it's not on the list, but-
It's not on the list. Same crossing guard, thank you. And next to staff updates, we have a special guest, Andrea Smith, who is the curator of the Gatehouse, the Gatehouse. Come on up.
Hello, thank you for having me today to give you a little bit of an update on what's going on at the Gatehouse Museum. So I want to tell you a little more about what we did. Most of you came and visited us around this time last year, we had our open house. This year, we have a lot of things going on that are the same and also some things that are different, but I also wanted to throw in some statistics here so you can see how our growth has been over my last two and a half years working here. So we have a picture here of our original turn to Sykesville in the late nineteen sixties. We are still running our mid-century exhibit. So this is actually an image from our Sykesville Herald newspaper collection. We have all the images that were from their reserves and we're in the process of getting those professionally archivally indexed and scanned and things by the photo archives company. They're also doing a program with us. If you, like many people, have inherited many boxes of photos from your family, we're doing a photo archiving session on February twenty-seventh at six P M. here at the townhouse. And you would be more than welcome to come learn how to deal with that giant pile of photos or what have you. It will be followed by a workshop that will be run by the same lady who's doing it. Alright. Carrie, thank you. So over the last year, we've really worked on collaboration and outreach more than anything else. And most of that has been because we have, of course, our hundred and twentieth anniversary of the town coming up this May. And so Carroll County in particular, here in Sykesville, as you can see over time, has been a part of a number of different places, which means that our historical records are also in a lot of different places. So one of the ways that we're pulling on that as far as kind of bridging the gap is a really big new event. We're going to do an archaeology day in April. So this is in collaboration with the site, the Howard County Archaeologist Kelly Pelick. It will be hands-on. Kids and also adults can sign up to hands-on participate in the actual dig and writing things down through the Howard County Recreation Parks. That link is not up yet, but it will be on our Facebook when it is. I encourage you all to come see what's going on when that happens. If you don't sign up, you can still drop in. There will be activities there for kids having to do with the archaeological history and also some signage and things about past digs that have been done along the Patapsco River in our history because there have been rather a few. So that'll be really interesting coming up. Next, Carrie. Oh, did you skip one? Yeah. Me. Is that the next one?
No, it was ongoing projects, I think was.
One, two. Okay.
Oh, sorry.
Alright, this year, what has been new, I did costumed interpretation numerous times over the summer. Gatehouse is nineteen oh four, so I dressed up in a nineteen oh four outfit. We did wash days, we did craft days, we did all kinds of different things. I also, for our fall fest this year, dressed in costume. I will be adding to that interpretation a depression era costume because it will be much more pleasant in the summertime than all that hair and corsetry. And we've been really successful with our homeschool outreach. We did two sessions this fall, both of which were very wildly attended. Joe came in on one of the days that it happened and for a little tiny house, we were full to the gills both times. We'll be continuing with those this year. Remembrance Day was, of course, a great success. We have some ideas on how to improve on that and make it both better and more exciting than last time. And then we did try to do our historic house tours this winter as well. However, the day that we did it, it poured rain and was horribly windy, so. We'll give it another go this year. We're looking for someone to help head up our team to try to get a committee together to organize that and add in the local homes as it once was done before. So it used to be that within the neighborhoods, several different homes were stops on the historical house tour. That is more than our part-time staff of two can handle. That really needs a group of people and ideally people who own historical homes themselves or know somebody who can help us put that together. So we're still looking for teams to do that. We're advertising it all over the place, so we hope that that'll get bigger and broader as we move forward. Another big thing that happened this past year was our hubner tour. I went over to the state police training center and told them about the history of their building and what went on with that. We've done a lot of work with Springfield, not just with the state police, but also lots of different areas around it in the past year and have done a lot of research with them as well. Recent discoveries other than Springfield things, I'll actually be presenting at the library about immigration, not just here in Sykesville, but in Maryland at large, having to do with our Maryland Immigration Point, Locus Point in Baltimore and how it related to the Springfield population of immigrant insane, if you will, that's what they called it at the time. We of course don't use those terms anymore. We also did some research about the community known as the Row, which used to be in the Thomas Hug area and finding out some more information about how that community and the area of the bottoms, which is sort of where the colored schoolhouse were. We didn't find a huge amount of information, but we did find more than we had. And again, that's part of that collaboration, mostly with Howard County. And as well as that, we also had some research we did helping with the train station report. So you'll probably see some images and things, I would imagine, when Joe presents that to you. We've digitized everything we had archived of those images over time, but we certainly have more in the collection that are going as we go that need to be dual indexed. We also finished documenting Thelma Wimmer's original Room of History indexes. So that was really interesting in that the original collection had about three hundred and fifty pieces before it was moved to the gatehouse. And it was really kind of inspiring to see that those original pieces are almost all not only still in the collection, but are things that are on display. So it was really when those early days were founded that they found those things that really were meaningful and people were doing things that were being given away that were really important. Okay. Ongoing programs in addition to what I've already mentioned, we're still doing community presentations, we're still doing all kinds of outreach. We're still doing Carroll County Historical Society outreach as well. We recently attended one of their events. But in general, their whole outlook on how things are working within the county has drastically changed thanks to Laura Bankert, who's their new, I believe her title is Communications Director, I think. And so she has done such a fabulous job at getting all the small museums and historical institutions and things in the county together, talking to one another, interacting with one another. And we're trying to really pull off that and strengthen what we have at the museum by directing people in sort of a visitor service capacity of, you know, we only have so much information about farming and we have a lot about, say, Fairhaven or other things like that, but you might want to find out more about farming at the farm museum up the road, or you might want to find out more about railroading over in Mount Airy and kind of directing people to where these experts are locally that also kind of cross-reference where we are. We expect to have yet another Carroll County Public Schools intern. We just found out that we'll have one again this fall. Lexi Molton was our spring intern. She did a display on art deco designs and did some things here in the townhouse as well. We'll participate in the farmer's market. You have Colleen, my assistant, there in the picture. And we've also been doing a lot of the outreach as the Carroll County Historical Society has as well to visit other museums and just make contact with them and let them know that, you know, Sykesville is here to interact with you too. And our wildly popular Springfield tours, which are also pictured there. This fall, although our tours were full every single time, the demand far exceeded what we could possibly be able to do. The town's tenuous relationship with the developers makes arranging those very difficult right now, but we do them as often as we can. It is a very different audience than who comes into our museum too. So, yeah. Our exhibit right now, again, is continuing with our mid-century themes. The main thing this year is with businesses, we have a couple advertisements up there. So as far as what was going on in Main Street, we've created a partial map. We will probably never have a complete map of every business that was ever at each address, but we're trying to compile that and sort of align it with what's going on with the Historic District Commission and make it a little bit easier to access those things. And Carrie and I have talked about how as we move forward, we can make all that gel a little more cohesively together and have all those images in one place and that kind of thing. Museum numbers, the red line, the top line, is our most recent year's numbers. The bottom line was our historic non-pandemic average and the middle line was last year's. And really, all you can take away from this is our numbers are much higher and they're sort of following that pre-pandemic trend. So the same patterns more or less are occurring. The spike that you see that's in that September, October, November, we expect that that's our homeschool groups accounting for most of that. Alright, and these do not include the Springfield tours. These are just people coming in the door of the museum. So you can see on this graph, this is our year-over-year increase as far as population. So in the door of the museum, we had nine hundred and ninety visitors. However, as you see on the pie chart here, the lighter shaded area is services we did that weren't necessarily at the museum. So they were going to Fairhaven to give a presentation, or they were giving a tour through different things, or they were helping with research or that kind of thing. So all of the people serviced this year was about thirteen hundred forty-six, give or take. We did have trouble towards the end of summer, we were so busy that these numbers definitely are not everybody, but they're as close as we have reckoning for. Are there any questions about the things we do at the museum right now?
No.
No? Okay. Yeah. So for twenty twenty-four, the biggest thing that I wanted to tell about the gatehouse expenses is we have a major problem on our porch. The posts, really at the top and the bottom, so you see there, it's at the top, but are just crumbling. The, the pillars are not supporting the porch any longer. And so they had fixed temporarily the one corner that had sunk, but this is beyond that problem, just the structure itself is kind of falling apart. Beyond that, we also put a proposal in for as that is fixed. If we can raise the porch about two inches to meet our threshold and add a ramp, as has been discussed many times in the gatehouses past, then at least our first floor can be accessible to some level. Now, the interior doors of the gatehouse will never be accessible, they are too narrow, but it will at least allow those with a mobility constraint that is not necessarily a wheelchair to be able to come inside the house. So in addition to that work, which I believe the bids are the twelfth of February?
There was a pre-bid meeting today.
Yeah.
And again, once we actually have all those bids in and reviewed, then we'll be able to present them to council. We're hopeful on the twelfth February twelfth.
Yeah. So that's the biggest thing that's happening, so we expect that that will take quite a while to fix. And because that is only really accessible at all entrance, that makes the gatehouse not very useful at that time as far as a museum is concerned, but we will be continuing with a lot of other programs. For example, we have hands-on history workshops. So last year, our speaker series was not especially well-attended, so in exchange of that, again, we have this photo archiving workshop where we're going to be doing a speaker first, but then that hands-on element to it as well. And then we're also going to be doing a series on how to interview people to find out about the, the members of your families past or maybe other people's past and how to get that information on tape or whatever have you. Later, we're also going to have a series on writing your own story, writing memoirs and looking at examples of writers in Sykesville and surrounding areas that have written about this areas past and how you can do that in different ways. We do expect that this year, especially with an expected closure, that our numbers will probably level out. We had sort of meteoric rise the last two years, but we do expect that they'll be somewhat similar to last year. We do expect the continued interest in the tours to continue. We've requested tours for April and then we will again in the fall, depending on how Warfield litigation shakes out. And we will also be evaluating items in our collection that are in need of preservation. So again, when we go through that list of the original Room of History collection, we're really concerned about those objects that were donated, some of them in the nineteen seventies. And which ones need to be either refinished in order to give them that original feel. Again, as a historic house museum, we're not, it's a Smithsonian, we're not as concerned about them being in their pristine condition. We're, we're concerned about them looking as they might have in the past. And so especially since a lot of things in the museum are reproduction items, just what needs, what's too scratched to be looking like it should, what needs to be reframed professionally, what needs to be archived digitally and then maybe put somewhere else in storage where it's not going to be handled or shown to light as often as it would. And a lot of those things to do them in an archival process are pretty expensive, but it sort of depends on the object. But that's one of the things that we're really working on as we move forward in our development of the museum. I think that was it. Is that it? Yeah. Are there any other questions?
I have one question.
Yes.
With the cemetery that's not in the town property, but may be a cemetery for some people that lived in the area of the town property, have we ever thought about doing anything like the Reese across America or any sort of wreath laying during sort of holidays from a historic perspective?
Which cemetery are you referring?
So it's the cemetery that if you keep going, I, I don't know the road, I don't know if it's Buttercup that goes all the way through.
The one in Springfield property?
And then there's-
Behind the baseball or soccer field or whatever over there.
So that's, that's Sunnyside Cemetery. It's still run and maintained as best they can by the State Department of Health. So they have their own ways that they do that. If you wanted to collaborate with them, I strongly recommend you reach out to Jordan Butler, the, the head of the hospital. He's usually very supportive and things like that. I know that they're stretched very thin right now. The, the end of the year, the beginning of the year are their busiest season as far as intakes, but they also are taking in not overflow, but they're helping other institutions that are closing for refurbishment and because of the way the state is re-switching things around and there's still the upcoming Spring Grove closure to be considered that they still haven't quite figured out the logistics of. But as far as the cemetery is concerned, it is still open to the public, anybody, they don't reserve any access to it at all. I don't know, other than asking through the hospital itself, how you would go about, I mean, it's not in town limits, so.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions?
Of course. Have you been in contact with the Historical Society of Carroll County?
Yes, of course.
Well, I wanted to be sure you were. I thought you were, because what I'm getting at is, you know, I know that, I have a friend who's, works with them. And he said that, you know, their box lunches, they're always looking for topics. I got a feeling you could fill up one of their days and everybody would enjoy it.
So they haven't asked me up there yet. I'd be willing to do it, of course. So as I said, the library asked me to come back. This is the second year I'll be at the library. So they haven't asked me up there yet. I'd be willing to do it, of course. Um, so as I said, the library asked me to come back. This is the second year I'll be at the library. And told me I could literally talk about whatever I wanted because we completely filled the room last time, so. Um, hopefully that happens again. So, yeah, yes, sir.
Great, great work. Really, really great report. Thank you so much. So I was wondering on the homeschool front. Did the homeschool co-ops come to you or have you been reaching out with them? Have you maintained contact with them?
Yes, so it started with a few groups that came in groups of ten or so, and then my, my associate Colleen, she herself. Homeschooled her children.
Okay.
And so she was familiar with a number of different groups and has been connecting back with them again. And also just through the groups that have already come in order to build up these, it's, it's very much a word-of-mouth kind of network.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. Yes. So, yeah, I know Colleen pretty well.
Yeah.
We homeschooled too, so that's, that's great if you could kind of tailor the courses towards a grade-level. History course, whatever.
Right. It's really hard because it's everything. It'll be one group and it'll be kindergarten through eighth grade or so. And you don't really know what's coming until they get there.
Well, that's good. As long as you maintain contact with them, hopefully you can just cycle them through every year. They'd love to come, so.
Yep.
Great job.
I mean, of course, we always reach out to our public schools too. I was a former public school teacher, so. Um, we have had difficulty reaching out to them as far as they're really constrained in their field trip rules and that kind of thing, but we always ask. And we hope eventually it'll take better advantage of being next door, especially Sykesville Middle School.
Adrian, I have a question. Um, with you positioning objects throughout, where, where's your storage? Do you have enough storage?
So our storage right now is primarily in the attic of the museum. We did have a major update grade to our heating and cooling system last year. Which made an enormous difference in the stability of the temperature and humidity within the building. However, because that had not been maintained for some time, uh, a lot of stuff kind of freaked out, like paper that gets damp and then dries kind of thing. Um, and so we're really, even though we did an inventory right when I started in twenty twenty-one. We're doing it again in order to evaluate what has, what needs help now that things are more stabilized again.
But you have enough room?
I mean, nobody has enough room in the museum. Um. Yes.
And, and the basement is a little off limits.
We cannot store anything in the basement. Um, it is definitely an ongoing saga of moisture. And that kind of thing. Um, we have asked and tentatively have permission to move our Sykesville Herald paper records. So we still have digital records and we have the microfilms. Um, but move the paper records to the Historical Society for the county, so that they'll still be reasonably nearby and. Inexpensive to access for our local people. Um, but that they'll be a lot safer there as far as. That's way better than an attic, even a air-conditioned attic. Um, any other?
Do you plan migration of that film too?
So the microfilm will stay with, they have their own microfilm copy, as does the Enoch Pratt Library, and we also have.
Okay, Enoch Pratt has it?
Yeah, we also have digital copies that we digitized from an old CD copy. Yeah.
I'll have a question offline then. Okay.
Okay.
So I just want to say thank you, um, very thorough and obviously you've been very busy and the numbers look great. Um, that people are accessing it. I just, in terms of keeping on the radar, I know we've talked in Parks and Rec. Um, about kind of wanting to move to plaques in each of our parks. Um, you know, and I'd love to see something along, um, the, the trail in Warfield. Area about, um, you know, some of the history of, of the town as well, kind of like a.
Yeah.
If we could use that, that seems like the easiest walking path to.
Yeah.
Kind of do a town history or.
Um, Joe and I have talked about this several times. We even have a manufacturer we're looking at that allows for interchangeable placards. We really want to, that would allow us to do things like have people work together, maybe homeschool, maybe public school. Put in stuff and we can change it out. Um, they're also, they're invented for use as story trails, if you've seen those around the county that the libraries have done. But they're a little bit bigger than that, so they're useful for a number of different things. Um.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me. Thank you for taking interest in the gay area.
Wonderful.
Next up, Treasurers Report. Come on, Craig.
Good evening, everybody. Nice to see everybody. A couple days after a Ravens victory. Uh, at this time, I would like to present the December's Treasury Report. Unlike our lovely curator, this information is only about twenty-two days old. Sixty years or anything, so we're in good shape there. Uh, I don't know if you guys had a chance. To thoroughly look at the new reports. They're fairly similar to what I usually produce. But I have made a change from, we were QuickBooks Desktop to now we're de- uh, QuickBooks Online, which obviously is a cloud-based system. Uh, variety of reasons for that. Desktop is getting too expensive. It's getting, you know, out of date, like they won't support it anymore, so. Uh, against my wishes, we decided to change because I'm an old-school guy. Not old, I'm just old-school, so.
You're old too.
And I'm old. So we decided to make the change and it actually, it's benefiting already. Friday, for instance, I was able to work at a new system. And I now have that with desktop, so that was good. Uh, the second comment I'd like to make is, as you can see with the, the revenues expenditure report. Actually based on a report I found in the news system, it was the percentage of budget column, which is all the way to the right there, which. You probably can't see very well, some of the percentages there. But there, it's a good quick uh, read on something to say like. Real estate is sixty-five percent right now, so it means it's already, we made sixty-five percent of the budget at six-month mark. So it's kind of like a good read real quick. It works better with the expenses than it does the revenue. But that's, you know, a good uh, percentage. I wish I'd actually done that sooner, so.
You mean, you could have done it sooner?
I could have probably done that sooner, so, but.
Well, I, I definitely appreciate it.
So I think it's a, it's a better tool now that I think we'll all be able to utilize more effectively in the future.
You were holding off on us. You were holding back on us, is that?
Yeah, we'll say that. We'll go with that. Um, and then as well, speaking of real estate taxes, we've actually gotten. Uh, six hundred thousand in, by the way, last couple of days ago, actually, so that's, we're rolling with a hundred percent you'll see next month when I do the report. Um, through December at the six-month mark, we're down to, uh, two, I should down, but we're still two hundred thousand for our revenue or expenditures. That's down from November, obviously, where we were pretty high at six eighty-four. Uh, basically, we didn't have much revenue in December, which is normal. Uh, and then as well as tremendous amount of expenses that are not normal, such as. Uh, the Maryland State Retirement Agency Pension Contribution, that's like a hundred seventy-five thousand. That's. One-time annual that just usually falls in December. And then we had some smaller ones, obviously legal fees, as you're more than aware of. It was like forty-seven thousand and then had some smaller capital, Moxley Welding. For the new, uh, new used dump trunk that we got. Uh, we put some money in that for twenty-seven. As well, seven springs, we spent thirteen with some upgrading landscaping and stuff. Um, other than that, uh, it was pretty straight. You know, everything else was pretty clean and. Look forward to any comments or questions you guys would have at this point in time.
Awesome. I've liked the new format. I do too.
Hopefully, uh, maybe, maybe Taylor Swift's looking at this right now and maybe she'll come out to visit Sykesville Saturday.
She's got to take her shirt off. Always take your shirt off. I'm sure you're an Eagles fan.
Yeah, they did well. Maybe next year.
So Joe, uh, getting off the topic of, we were talking about the new truck. Did that work out okay for the town, clearing the snow out, Derek's crew?
It did. They did test it out a little bit. Um, there were, there were things we knew that we had to take care of on that truck and we did. And we won, this, this, uh, this test run, uh, showed a few other things we got to fix on the truck. But yeah, nothing, nothing big, nothing major. Uh, it should serve as our, as a good replacement for Big Red.
Great.
Definitely worth the cost of it.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, are we gonna put a Sykesville logo on that so people won't think we're paying for a rental on that?
Excuse me, police, you know, I'm flying, police.
Cause, cause some people were.
Is there a contractor on this?
Yes, that's, uh, that's what I thought was going on at first, so.
Any other questions?
Is there any other comments with the, the new four, like especially the check register, was that okay? I mean, did you guys understand it? I mean, it's a little bit of a change, but not drastic. I think it's still pretty straightforward still.
Took us a minute to figure it out.
I was gonna say, I know it's not like major change, it's kind of a minor change.
The percentage of the, the budget, the fourth column is very helpful. So thanks, thanks for doing that.
We're gonna keep adding columns. Different percentages, different.
No, because then they get smaller.
Landscape, forty pages long.
This is my capacity for.
Of the hour presentation, it'd be worse than the one.
Thanks so much.
Alright, thank you guys.
Next up is the Public Safety Report Chief.
Thank you, Council President. And Craig, you're, you're inspiring to me. It's just good to know you can teach an old dog new tricks and. Certainly take that into consideration. Oh, I did want to address, before I get into the Public Safety Report, a couple of questions that we had. Uh, just two, real briefly. Uh, one was regarding case, uh, twenty, uh. Zero, 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 four. It was an auto theft from the middle school. And, uh, basically on January sixth, between four fifty and five thirty-seven P M. A series of vehicle tamperings took place on the parking lot of Sykesville Middle School. This was while. An event was taking place inside the school. Um, just happened to be pouring rain that day, but that's neither here nor there. Uh, one vehicle was entered by smashing out a rear passenger side window. And an expensive purse, wallet and contents were removed to include credit cards. Uh, the suspect vehicle is a white GMC Terrain SUV, possibly a twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-four. Uh, vehicle has no front tag and probably a temporary tag on the rear. Um, Sergeant Lacy's actually doing the follow-up on this case and, and is able, was, was able to actually obtain photograph of the suspect vehicle. Unfortunately, uh, it has not led to any arrests at this point. Uh, interesting to note that there were other similar thefts from autos in Eldersburg. The greater Sykesville area and Westminster, uh, between January fifth and January seventh, so. We're, we're not the only ones being targeted, unfortunately.
With the same vehicle or just the same?
No, similar M O.
Okay.
In a, in a close proximity. Uh, the other question was regarding, uh, zero, 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 eight. Uh, was again another theft from vehicle, I believe to be unrelated to this one. Uh, the question was, was, was the vehicle unlocked? And in that particular case, uh, it was unlocked. This was on January eleventh, about four in the morning. Unknown suspect gained in, gained access into two unlocked vehicles, removed wallet, credit cards and cash. And in that case, a silver sedan, uh, was the suspect vehicle. And Sergeant Lacy's actually working on that one as well. I believe in that one, the credit cards were used at the Wawa and Walmart in Glen Burnie shortly thereafter, so.
So you have a vehicle with that and a partial Maryland tag?
The silver sedan, yeah.
Nissan Maxima.
So that was the only two questions I got. Uh, with that, I'll just go right into the Public Safety Report, just covering, uh. Basically twelve, twelve days, January second through the fourteenth, three hundred ninety-three total events. Uh, nothing really jumps, jumps out, very relatively short, um, report. There were ten incident reports written during that timeframe that I'd be more than happy to answer any questions about if, if you have any.
Chief, are the Ring cameras that neighbors have, are they helpful with?
Very helpful.
Okay.
And the case, uh, the case is over there at, uh, Raincliff. Uh, that was actually, uh, some of the evidence that we used to determine suspect vehicle. So I wish everybody had a Ring camera. Would help us tremendously.
And when you're investigating, you'll investigate and say, oh, that neighbor has a Ring camera, can, would you mind if I had that video or something like that?
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah, we will do it in the old-fashioned way by, uh, just knocking on doors. Or oftentimes we'll put a, uh, a blurb on the Ring Neighborhood App, which goes out to everyone in a certain area. And ask if they have any, ask them to look to see if they have any video during that time, and if they have it, to send it to us, you know.
Thank you.
Very helpful. Another question?
Nope.
Okay, well, thank you.
That's all the info, Chief.
Council committee reports. Which way do we want to start?
You have a charge.
Just briefly, um, downtown Sykesville connection. Um, the D S E is currently planning upcoming events with an emphasis on showcasing a diverse mix of cultural arts, cuisine, entertainment. The next two coming up are the Coco Crawl twenty twenty-four from February twenty-fourth from noon to four. Uh, supporting downtown merchants with advertising and ticket sales on our social media and website under Merchant Events. And then, um, on February eighteenth at three P M at Axe Fairhaven. There is the Rhythms of Heritage as part of Black History Month. Tickets are for sale on our website, um, at the event tab for twenty dollars. And the annual presentation for the D S E will be at our next council meeting on February twelfth.
Uh, Historic District Commission is meeting Wednesday. There's three signs for, uh, three applications per signage.
No updates?
Uh, the next meeting for Planning Commission should be on February fifth, seven o'clock here. Thank you. The Cable, uh, Carroll County Regulatory Commission meeting was canceled because we didn't reach quorum, so I have nothing to report there. But I did want to pass on from the neighbors, I already did, uh, to Joe, but shout out to the guys and gals who were plowing. I had a, a lot of people saying how happy they were rather than complaining about something. And I always thought it's nice to pass on good news. So there, in my neighborhood, I was thrilled at the way it was handled.
I swear I had my own public-private, um, plow because for like two hours, came up and down.
We were testing the new truck.
That's why I tested all out from my ass.
Whatever works.
I knew drivers.
Um, I just want to say that I, um, uh, attended the Raincliff Home and Nurse Association via Zoom. Very informative, um, very welcoming. I'm hoping that we can, I know that there was a duration between Councilman Schofield. Leaving and me coming in, so hopefully we can bridge that gap and, and come together and, and. Be part of it. Okay. Any other questions, comments? Joe, anything?
Uh, just to, I guess, reiterate what, uh, Councilman Dyer said, just to say it properly, that our guys worked very hard in the public works crew. Uh, last week with really two snowstorms kind of hook-ending the week. Uh, and again, anytime you have snowstorms that close together, you know, you, you never really had an opportunity for the fir- first storm to melt. So there was always, uh, areas where there was some, you know, compaction and some ice and, you know, they, they handled it very well, so. Uh, you know, anytime we get a, a phone call at, at the townhouse, uh, you know, we do try to address any issues that people may have. But I think overall, uh, guys did a great job and, uh, you know, we hope that's it for the year.
Yeah, and those storm, storm-sandwiched, um, trash and recycling pickup too, so they did a great job.
Yeah, I couldn't believe that the, came by to pick up the trash after they plowed the street. It was like, alright, cool.
They're working hard.
Great job.
Joe, I saw that Springfield has finally closed?
Springfield has closed, so there was a little, uh, well, they did a little saw cutting today. I'm not so sure they did much else, but, uh, but the road is closed. I did notice that there was a few people bypassing the, uh, the detour signs on Springfield Avenue. I would just encourage, if anybody's actually listening, if you try that tomorrow, you might not be so lucky. So, you know, pay attention to the detour signs.
And Vince was not happy.
Yeah. We, we've been talking. You can still get into old town motors.
Yeah. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Happy anniversary.
Thank you.
You going up to dinner or did you already celebrate?